Good evening. Red Bank's zoning board of adjustment will come to order this twentieth day of February two thousand twenty-five, time is six thirty. Roll call.
Ann Torrey.
Here.
Ray Mas.
Here.
Eileen Hogan.
Here.
Ben Yarrow.
Here.
Sharon Lee.
Here.
Vincent Light.
Here.
Paul Kianum.
Yeah.
Anna Cruz.
Here.
Amanda Calafano.
Absent.
Eugene Horowitz.
Here.
And Chris Havens.
Here.
Adequately, this meeting has been posted by our hall, filed with the borough clerk and mailed to the Esberry Park Press and the Tourer Times. This meeting is being taped recorded. In any event, the applicant uses the service of the court report to transcribe tapes. The board requires a copy of the transcript. We will break it about eight P M. for deliberation. Testimony heard those far on the conference room on the first floor. Public is invited to attend how our discussion between board members and the public is at that time. No new cases will be heard after nine P M. Red Bank's zoning board of adjustment has maintained a policy cutoff hour of nine thirty P M. for its hearings. Any advocates here this evening will be carried over to the next scheduled meeting. Um, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance in the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, and just as for all.
Okay, we have some administrative matters to do. Uh, meeting length from February sixth. Somebody make a motion to approve.
Make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a couple of resolutions to handle. Uh, resolution approval on one oh three East Front Street.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Good evening and good evening to ladies and gentlemen of the board. That was the Riverview Medical Center application uh, for removal of an existing parking lot and construction of a private parking lot for use by hospital employees. And the conditions of note um, were compliance with the review memorandum and uh, uh, confirmation that the fence would be replaced uh, in the same location. It would be a six foot black uh, chain link fence. Uh, zoning compliance signs to be placed in the parking lot confirming that is for hospital employees only. Uh, removal of the existing Jersey barriers, uh, parking lot, it's not a commercial parking lot, but rather per the testimony, it's to be used by the hospital employees. And it's uh, they submit a lighting study and if as a result thereof, the board engineer determines that additional um, lighting fixtures are necessary, they'll, they'll be installed. No lights spill over and that the applicant will uh, submit the twenty-five foot easement uh, to the Borough of Red Bank on terms which the Borough of Red Bank finds acceptable. And that would be recorded and uh, if we can accept that as modified, we, I just, I talked about some of the conditions I just, that I've read were just modified, but if we can adopt that as modified, that would be very good if that's the pleasure of the board.
Somebody like make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Ben. Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then Ivy, she abstained, sorry.
Okay, we have a resolution approval for sixty-two White Street.
Mr. Chairman, that was um, inclusion pathways and that was the former Hobby Masters building just to install three signs at the site and the review uh, the uh, compliance, I'm sorry, the main conditions were um, compliance with all the terms and conditions and promises that the team made during the public hearing. The illumination shall comply with prevailing illumination regulations of the borough. Uh, the color is going to be teal and it's going to be consistent and Shauna, we had that the one illuminated sign will only be exterminally externally illuminated during regular business hours and the same will definitely be turned off or non-illuminated from ten o'clock P M. to seven o'clock each day. And um, we also had remember that they have to give us final uh, final plans with the window sign details. And we have to make sure that they comply with the color regulations and that they are not to exceed the twenty percent threshold for window sign coverage. And I think that was the, and they would comply with a review memorandum from Shauna. Uh, no third party advertising on that sign, no, no electronic or interchangeable copy and no blinking or flashing lights. Uh, we did have a couple of typographical errors in that, so if it's acceptable, we can adopt that um, as modified.
I'll make a motion to move it.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have new business to eleven Shrewsbury Avenue.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman. First up, is there anyone here who had any comments or concerns regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? We don't see any and uh, let the record reflect that the notice was reviewed and found acceptable. And uh, what we will do is we will swear in uh, Jackie Durman, our board engineer and Shawna Ebanks are uh, are a planner and our director of community development. Jackie and Shawna, if you could just raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that uh, both witnesses have been sworn. And what we will do is we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. So A one is the application package. A two is the denial of development permit dated December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four. A three is the intent to proceed. And that was dated December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. A four are the plans prepared by Edward O'Neil uh, dated November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. A five is the review memorandum uh, from Shawna Ebanks and that is dated February nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I think that's the gist of everything, Shawna, that we have to enter. Um, so with that, we'll turn it over to Mr. McKenna. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Excuse me. It's very nice to see everyone. I do not want to underestimate the importance of this application, but I don't want to overestimate the complexity. Um, it's very simple. Um, I think everybody knows the Parker Health Center. It's inherently beneficial use and credible. Um, facility that our community provides and um, they have, as you well know, a significant addition onto their property. As a result of that, there is significant concern about this facility.
Bring it in.
Oh, sorry. Uh, about the visibility of their signage. So um, they asked Mr. O'Neil to come up and create two signs, which he's done. And I'm going to let Mr. O'Neil um, advise the board. There's two variants. One is normally they'll allow more than one sign. In this case, we're requesting the right to have two, so they will have enough visibility for the respective um, people that come to the health center. And uh, the second is one of the signs exceeds the square footage uh, by that square.
Sure. You know what? Why don't you just state your name and uh, address for the record and then we'll swear you in.
Edward W. O'Neil Junior, sixty-five months, Red Bank.
Good evening. Uh, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
I do.
And just for the record, tonight you're testifying in your capacity as?
An architect and a planner.
Architect and a planner. Thank you.
And you've been here, I don't know how many times, so we're okay with you.
Thank you. He's not dying after this one. You remember when this building was approved, the addition was approved and if you've ever acted in a original building. Problem is that the block in which it sits had been rezoned from N B to R B. And so, and that was to accommodate the River Street School renovation. You know, decades ago. And so everything on this site and the two sites next to it are variants because it's a residential zone, but clearly it's in the middle of the neighborhood business district. So any sign doesn't comply. Really can't, I think it's a two by four foot, two by two foot signs, the maximum that can be had. So that's one of the reasons why I'm here. One of the signs is to one of the major donors who helped fund the addition. And one of the conditions was that they have their input on the building in a somewhat discreet manner, which we tried to do. The other is literally the Parker Family Health Center sign, which replaces the one that used to be on the front of the original building. So if you, if you kind of think of it this way, you can think of it that the sign that was approved by variants has been relocated onto the addition up high enough to be able to see it from traffic going either north or south on Shrewsbury Avenue. That's the one sign. Um, and it's unlit. It's not a lit sign. So it's really there as an identifier. I mean, it's a nonprofit organization. There's no money exchange inside the building or anything, so it's really just to let people know it exists. It's not an advertisement sign. And we think the size is appropriate, given the scale of the building and how far set back from the street. Which we needed to do in order to park all spaces out there. The other sign is very small. It's, it's two by eleven. Uh, and it's individual letters on the building background. So it's very, very uh, muted, but it is a thank you to a very generous donor to the construction of the addition of the building, which was really a critical addition for the Parker Family Health Center, it was mission to provide um, medical services to the working on issue.
So, so neither of these signs are lit, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, there's actually no electricity to them to light. That would ensure that they won't.
Just one question, Ed. Um, on the rendering that you provided, um, there is a sign above the canopy. Um, the entrance canopy, is that still going to happen?
No. It was decided instead that the other sign would be more visible for both directions, so that was determined. And that, that kind of happened as construction went on and we were able to show the center and board what the building looked like. If you will relocate it, but it's a new sign. It's not the same.
Any questions for Mr. O'Neil from the board? Any questions for Mr. O'Neil from the public? Close out. Mr. McKenna?
Go, folks.
So, Mr. Chairman, if the, if the board is so inclined, the typical sign conditions that we have, which we just sort of read, would be compliance with all the promises, commitments and representations that the team made throughout the public hearing. Compliance that Shawna's review memorandum, compliance with any affordable housing rules, regulations, contributions, if, if any um, outside approvals, uh, a twenty-four month timeframe. Um, there's no sign elimination, so no sign illumination, no third party advertising, uh, no interchangeable copy, electronic features, et cetera, other than what's approved. And Shawna, any reason we have to uh, do anything with sign colors? Do they have to comply with anything or we just don't have to worry about that?
We don't have to worry. The one sign, both signs are in one color.
Good.
And it's a part of their, the uh, Parker Health sign is uh, a part of their logo, so.
Very good.
It's fine there.
And we have, uh, yeah, I guess just confirmation that there's not going to be any sign above the canopy. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. McKenna, are those conditions acceptable to your client?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, if they're good for you, let's vote.
Okay, Parker Clinic, Parker Clinic is a, is a wonderful establishment here in Red Bank and I'd be the first to approve this application.
I'll second.
Ann Torrey.
Yes.
Ray Mas.
Yes.
Eileen Hogan.
Yes.
Ben Yarrow.
Yes.
Sharon Lee.
Yes.
Vince Light.
Yes.
Paul Kianum.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Three. Go.
Okay. Next up, we have two oh four Shrewsbury Avenue.
Coming back. Okay, and as um, we get ready for this, uh, is anyone here, is there anyone here who had any questions or comments regarding the sufficiency of the notice they received? Okay, I don't see any. Uh, the notice was reviewed and found acceptable, uh, so therefore we do have jurisdiction. And I'm just going to swear in the witnesses and Mr. McKenna, while I'm doing that, um, I'm going to momentarily ask you where your client just works, so we can do a conflict of interest check about who the owner is and who the principals are and who the applicant are, is and the principals, so we can just do an internal conflict check. So what we'll do is uh, Jackie Durman, our board engineer and Shawna Ebanks, a planner and also our director of community development, we're swear, we will swear you in. If you could both raise your right hands, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide, to the extent you provide any, will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yes.
All right, let the record reflect that both witnesses have been sworn. And then what we will do, it will, we will mark into the record what we as a board have before us. A one is the application package. A two is the uh, site plan uh, prepared by Andrew Stockton of Eastern Civil Engineering dated September tenth, two thousand twenty-four, consisting of three sheets. A three is the topographic survey uh, prepared by Eastern Civil Engineering dated September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. A four, the architectural plans prepared by uh, Edward O'Neil uh, dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, two sheets. A five is a traffic impact study uh, prepared by dynamic traffic and that's dated November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. A six is the denial letter um, from Shawna Ebanks and that's dated October third, two thousand twenty-four. A seven is the intent to proceed. A eight is the disclosure of ownership. And A nine is the property owner certification dated July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. And ladies and gentlemen of the board, remember, anytime someone other than the owner is bringing an application, that's totally fine, but you have to have the owner's letter of consent and that's what we have. A ten is the land development escrow agreement. And I think um, A, let's see, A eleven is the certification of taxes and that's dated July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. And A twelve is the T and M Associates Review Memorandum dated February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And for that, we'll turn it over to Mr. McKenna and we will do our little conflict check.
Thank you, Kevin. Excuse me. Um, the, let me maybe perhaps introduce the, the owners and, and give a little bit of history. They are currently located, basically almost right next to the Parker Health Center. And uh, it's a liquor store that has been there for over thirty years. And for those, those of us that grew up in Red Bank and remember Charlie Seaford. It was, it was the liquor store that was right next to Charlie Seaford. Uh, and it's, as I said, it's been there for about thirty years. Um, the current owners have owned it for about five years. Um, and they wish to move to a bigger facility. There is Green's Garage for, again, for those of us that grew up in Red Bank. They former automotive uh, repair facility directly across the street. Literally directly across the street. And it's owned by Mr. Goodman, who is here this evening, Stephen Goodman. Um, it's been vacant now for many years, Mr. Goodman? Five years. About five or six years and uh, there's been no occupant and our clients are very interested in leasing it from Mr. Goodman. We've signed a tentative lease subject to the approval of the board if the board sees fit to grant it. And the uh, this is, I'm going to call it essentially a family operation. There's a husband, wife, um, and other relatives that are involved in this. And they're all owners of various LLCs. So for example, there's Somali Investors LLC on the Farad Kana Hotel. There is
And I found one disclosure of ownership uh, for So Martha RB LLC doing business as Spruce Liquors. Um, Heralg Patel, Mary Anne B. Naya and Baljani Patel.
Yes, that's correct. As far as, as far as key witness.
Great. So hearing those names and individuals, any conflicts or questions about conflicts or concerns about conflicts? None. Thank you.
So I'd like to start out the evening by um, addressing an issue that we'd like to um, handle first. Um, this is, this property is located in the N B zone, the neighborhood business zone. It is a neighborhood business. It's been a neighborhood business for thirty years. And it's been run by these individuals for um, I think it's the last five years. And um, it is a neighborhood business, but there is a square footage limitation in the neighborhood business zone. It's been there forever. Uh, variance has been granted before for it. Um, I've done a few of them, but um, it's just the nature of the ordinance. It limits it to uh, two thousand square feet and in this case, it's a bigger building. So we need to come before you for a use variance because of the size of the building. So I'm going to ask Mr. O'Neil to testify as a planner on the appropriateness of the use variance uh, for this. So have an effect with sort of my, so Kevin, you have a bunch of, we want to address the use variance first. And then if the board sees that we have the use variance, then we'd like to address the subject.
All right, and then just at the risk of speaking for the board, um, before they vote on the use variance, would, would they be hearing things about hours of operation and things like that?
Yes. And I, and we would welcome any questions that the board might have. And I'll try to address a number, they will be testified to ultimately anyway. Uh, but I, I would be happy to address any of those issues that the board may have prior to the board considering a vote on the experience.
All right, and we, we can ask sometimes, they'll be into that, sometimes they won't, but we'll, let's, we'll bring it up and do it.
We're having a board loss.
Okay.
So um, on that note, what I'd like to do is call it Mr. O'Neil.
I feel like I just saw him. All right, so Mr. O'Neil, just for the record, if you could just state your uh, name and business address again.
Edward W. O'Neil Junior, sixty-five months, Shrewsbury, thank you.
All right, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth to the best of your knowledge to help you, God?
Yeah.
And just for the record, you're testifying, uh, I guess we should swear you in as an architect and a planner.
Please, because some of the uh, planning testimony runs kind of into the architecture.
Got it. Thank you.
Now, Ed, you were retained by um, the applicants to uh, prepare both architectural plans for the rehabilitation of the building as well as um, addressing the planning issues and specifically the use variance required because of the N B designation. Is that correct? Yes. And I feel very familiar with the area in question. In fact, you pretty much live right there. I, I live within walking distance of the site. Um, so uh, based on your familiarity with that, but much more importantly, based upon your, your knowledge as a professional planner, uh, do you feel that, and would you represent to the board that both the positive and negative criteria can be met in this particular application? I believe so. And would you please um, enlighten the board as far as how, what's your opinion based? Okay, um, well, just uh, one thing to re, to everybody's knowledge is that this is really an interior renovation. There is no additional square footage being in the buildings. The primary scope of the architectural work is to add two, well, three doors, one for storage and two from each side of the building, parking lot is kind of split between front and back. And there are some improvements internally, there's a small ramp, additional bathroom, uh, those type of things, which will bring the, the up to building. But that's pretty much the scope of the work. So if you don't want to be interrupting just for a second. Sure. If anybody wanted to go into that building, it'd have the same problem, correct? Yes. Because you have an existing building, so unless you demolish the building, any applicant that approaches that, any Form C or anybody else that would want to go into that sign, who's going to have to come before this board to see the same variance, correct? Yes, and again, the, the space isn't that long, just three thousand seven hundred sixteen square.
I'm sorry, three thousand?
Seven sixteen by R double.
I'm sorry, you said that wasn't very large?
No, not really, as commercial space does. Actually, the, just, we're going to continue on that. If you think about the plumbing code, if you have a building that's fifteen hundred square feet, it only needs one bed. So that's considered to be almost a divinity impact in the building. So twice as big as that, but it's still small, small space. Um, so the D variance, um, following uh, some of the, the kind of typical things that we need to establish is, is the site particularly suited to the use. And one of the things that the building has been there for, at least forty, is either Green's Garage.
No, I'm just wanting to pull the mic closer to you. Thanks.
Yeah. So interior renovation is no expansion in the building. Um, and that the current is, Mr. McKenna said the current liquor store is literally across the street. The interesting thing about liquor stores now, you know, that in the old days, which is really if you go across the street to what's here now, more than half the building is stored.
Eddie, you may have to switch mics. I think that one doesn't work. Yeah, I don't think so. I don't know why it worked, plugged it in.
It was working before.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The last witness who used it, it was just sort of, you know, it's all over.
So impressive, thank you. Sure. Um, I'm sorry, because I repeat myself that um, over, and again, in a typical liquor store, like the one across the street from years ago, about half the building, if not sixty percent, would be storage. Storage of liquor and all sorts of other things. Today in liquor stores, it's mostly the inventories are out on the floor. And so it's kind of like going to Costco or places like that, in that, in red, red and sell everything away, it's put out for sale. And so basically you do need more space if you're going to do that. And so that's one of the reasons I think that my clients were attracted to the building, also because it was across the street and they had the same clientele. Um, we provide sixteen parking spaces, who are fifteen or required, so we have no impact based on that. And then we also are eliminating curb cuts on Shrewsbury Avenue, so that would increase on-street parking by two or three spaces. So again, I think from a circulation standpoint, we don't have a negative impact on the area and I think that makes the site suitable. Also, the building, because of the way it was done as a, as a repair garage, there were four large um, overhead doors in the back. So we are basically utilizing them for deliveries. And the entrance to the building will just be within the existing openings. So, and the other two garage doors that are there will have a wall on the inside, so there's no more ground problem. So I think, again, from the standpoint of deliveries, right now, the deliveries are made on the street. Trucks parts on Shrewsbury Avenue and loads everything in and people try to drive around it, it's a real problem, that would be limiting. There were also um, special reasons. Now, the N B zone is really created to maintain neighborhood businesses, so that it's broken up, there's a wall, not an unviable block, a superstore. Um, disrupt the character of the neighborhood and somewhat drive the neighborhood businesses out. And so that's why, that's where this two thousand square feet comes from, although two thousand square feet is somewhat an arbitrary number, but that's where it comes from. From the standpoint of this, this application, it's an existing business moving across the street. So you're maintaining a neighborhood business in almost the same location. Um, again, the building has been vacant, as Mr. Goodman said, for five or six years. Um, that's never a good thing, so it helps the neighborhood by having somebody occupy the building. Um, the curb cuts help for the traffic calming that the county is trying to do on Shrewsbury Avenue. They've been steadily working on redoing Shrewsbury Avenue to make pedestrian crossings a bit easier and safer. This isn't allowed to use. And And I think that my clients.
I'm sorry, just, just, so it's a permitted use but for the size of the building?
Yes, yes. Sale, primary liquor sales are permitted use. And also, my last thing I would say about that is, my clients have estimated that sixty to seventy percent of their clientele walked in sight. And that, that makes it a neighborhood business to me. The building, as it sit, as it hasn't existed, has always been one use. It's never been multiple uses, so it's never been subdivided. Subdividing the building is a little difficult because its configuration is kind of an L-shaped configuration, so it's not simple to do. So from a positive criteria, well, let's just go to the great with the negative criteria. There are surrounding retail uses that are greater than two thousand square feet. So what used to be Katzen's, which is now Floraia, left, the florist shop, that's over two thousand square feet. Certainly the Parker Family Health Center, you know, that's not retail, but that's over two thousand square feet. Juanito's Grocery is over two thousand square feet. Asha Pharmacy is slightly over two thousand square feet. And these were all within a block of the site, so it's not he hold what he want, not the biggest building.
Did all of those properties need variances?
Well, Parker Family needed a variance because of the thing I'm talking about.
Putting aside Parker Family, it's not a, not a retail, what about the other ones?
Yeah.
They did?
No, they had to, they had to, because they were all two quarter, two thousand square feet. So they were all granted.
Just for the rec, for the record, just because I've been here for a long time, very fortunately, but I'm wood. But I think, Mr. McKenna, you might have represented Juanito's, I think they got a variance.
They did.
Being larger than two thousand square feet, okay.
Yes, they did.
And I was the architect on it.
Okay.
On pharmacy, and I go back on there. For the same reason. We talked about the vacant buildings. I think the site improvements improved the circulation, we decreased curb cuts, it's a stable business, it's continuing to use us. Let's see. We talked about the minimal change to the building, Mr. Goodman, the building owner, has done significant exterior work in the building with the stucco system, patchy repairing it, adding a stone water course to the bottom of the building. And so I think the building looks a lot better than it has in a long time, and that's to his credit. And a lot of the landscaping that has been either overgrown, even before Mr. Goodman worked on the building, have been removed and will be replaced in the application. I don't think there's an impairment of the zone plan. If you go to the master plan, and it has those categories like connected, balanced, those things. To connect it, it says to establish a strong cohesive downtown area preserving distinct character of individual businesses. And that's both the Broad Street area and the Shrewsbury Avenue. It mentioned specifically. So I think, again, maintaining means repeating the characters. They say balanced, which is embrace a smart growth mentality with targeted infill development that minimizes unwanted negative impacts. And again, it's the same building. Not much is really changing, so that's infill development. And then the last one is, is labeled equitable, strengthen existing neighborhoods to enhance safety and community pride. And I think when you take an existing business, including a vacant building, and that's improvement with minimal impact. So I think that all the negative criteria is satisfied.
Mr. O'Neill on, on this side, but I do want to welcome questions from the board, and perhaps I can short circuit a little bit of it. There was a narrative submitted. The plan for this particular business is to operate it the exact same way as we can operate it now. It's a family business. They traditionally have two to three employees at any one time, no more than that. They do not need more than three employees at any one time, but that's the way the business is operated. They operate from nine AM to ten PM daily, period, seven days a week. And as far as trash is concerned, about ninety percent of their trash is cardboard. And the cardboard is stored in trash bins in, in the, in the particular location, and they come and pick up the cardboard two times a week. So that there's no significant garbage. There would be garbage, also private carding, and other garbage, but they'd say about, about ninety percent of their garbage is actually cardboard from the deliveries that are being, the facility.
And Ed, is that, that the same way how the deliveries are going to be collect, done? The trash is going to be picked up from the back where the deliveries are done to?
Yes.
Are they planning on vacating the current building they're in?
I think there's some, a party already interested in, is what I've been told. But they, they didn't held up, because it's, it's taking us a little longer than we had expected, as far as getting people to work.
Do the applicants own the other building, or are they renting that?
No, I don't think so.
They lease the building, it's on the other side of the street.
Any questions from Mr. O'Neill?
I just have one question. With this existing building, the thirty-seven hundred square feet, are there any uses that would not require a variance to move in there?
Not, well, I think if it was not retail, I think there are a lot of other uses that aren't allowed because it's primarily a retail area. But for this, arguably, the Parker Clinic, move across the street, they could, but that, that's a.
So any other retail use to move into the existing building would require a variance?
Yes.
If you want variance.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. What was the current size of the liquor store that they're, that they're in?
Is this a time to comment about the business itself? I live around the, I live around the corner. This is.
The comment and the question board.
It's just a time to comment.
We're just doing questions now for Mr. O'Neill. For the board, and I'll ask for questions from the public, and then we can do comments.
Um, yeah, I know you've, I like that one. Uh, I know you said you're going to discuss site plan later, but can you say anything about the landscaping for the parking lot? Because it's, you know, it's pretty unsightly to have a parking lot. And I'd love to see it landscaped nicely.
It's fairly limited as far as what we can do, regarding supporting the markings in the driveways. I know one of the challenges made by T and M was to ministerly, spread the property, move, tie from the pavement and put in a buffer for the residents next door, which we've actually discussed and are, we believe are prepared to do. So, but the only problem with doing that is we have a twenty-four foot driveway on that side, which is required. The, the, the driveway is required. So if we eliminate the driveway, and it's pre-existent, there's nothing we can do about it, but if we eliminate the driveway, then we're creating a variance for an undersized driveway. So that is something that the board would have to weigh. There's, yes, and you're, and if you don't understand, I mean, you're right, I mean, it's just a big side, it's probably a circle. The difficulty is that there's not much you can do. For example, there's a Monmouth County site plan, a site line that's involved, and we have to go visit with the county and make sure you can't interfere with that. You know, so there's certain limitations on what we can do.
Sorry, not interfere with the county, what? I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, Kevin, there's, there's a site line issue on Shrewsbury Avenue that the county has, is down the right line. After we meet with the board, we're going to go back and meet with the county and see what the county would allow us. If it allows us to put plantings in that area, we can do it. But we have to get their authority, you know, I mean, we can't, for example, if a six inch, a six foot or a variety in the site line, let's do it. But there may be an opportunity to put some low-level plantings, if, if we're permitted. But we don't know the answer to that yet.
Thanks.
I don't, I have a question, probably it's my ignorance more, but when it's, since it's an automotive shop, does that need any remediation from E, the EPA and all this? That can take a long time and, oh, okay, okay, all right.
I do have a, I believe.
Just turn on your mic, it's working now.
It's working now. Yeah, I do believe there is a row of shrubbery between the residential house on Catherine Street and the gas station building, or the service building, you know, between, isn't there already a row of shrubbery there?
Yeah, on the rest, yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions from Mr. O'Neill on this subject of D one? Any questions from the public, Mr. O'Neill, or is that part? Any comments on this part of this application?
I just wanted to mention, I, we live around the corner, my family, and I confess I have shopped this store for a number of years occasionally, and have always found the store itself and the street in front to be very clean, orderly, friendly, for the neighborhood business. And also the gas station is, you know, the service station building is sad, and it'd be very good to have that filled, like Katzen was filled a couple of years ago. So it's really a hole on Shrewsbury Avenue.
All of the things that Chris says are true. However, that is a major, that's the heartbeat of that whole neighborhood. And I don't know that a superstore, liquor store would be an asset to the community. We absorb lots of liquor stores. And yes, the community requires them, it seems. But I think that that's a large endeavor in the community, and I don't think it's to the advantage of that entire residential neighborhood that's around it. I understand it's not a family-friendly business, it is what it is. And, and I can see the appeal by the other little store to, to expand. I just don't think it's right for the neighborhood.
Sharon, if you don't mind me responding, the only other person that I'm aware of that has attempted to rent that building was for a cannabis facility. And it wasn't permitted in the zone. They went out and hired professionals that came out and said that it shouldn't be permitted. They came to us and said, what do you think? I said, no, but that was choice. The only reason, the point is, it's very difficult in the NB zone, though, a, a space of this magnitude. And the fact that it's sat vacant for so long, I, I would argue that you're not adding another liquor store, you're just moving a liquor store to a larger facility.
And I, I cannot disagree with you, but I am saying that, in my opinion, it's not an asset to have a superstore, another superstore liquor store in the community. I don't want to make another application relate to this application, but Dr. Parker's clinic exists, and lots of the serving services that they provide to the community are based on the misuse of this very same thing. So I find it hard, personally, to support this application, just because I just don't think it's the right thing for the heart of this community. It's, it's a superstore, and it's going to be, I mean, it's a superstore, it's going to be a large store, and for the community, it's a large store, and it will be filled, and it will probably draw new people, it'll be all the things they want it to be. I just personally, I mean, all I can come to the table with is my opinion about what that neighborhood does not mean. And I mean, I do understand the other store there, before it was a liquor store, it was my parents' laundromat. I don't know if you remember that quite sometime. So I know the neighborhood, I was born on that street. I mean, I totally get the allure and everything about it, I just don't think that I personally can support it, I don't find any peers here. They have to make their own opinion, I just want to give mine.
I see, I, I don't know. I understand, and I use the terminology, a superstore. It's, it's going to be bigger, but it's not going to be a bottle cane or one of those facilities. You know, I mean, it's still, it's still going to be a neighborhood store being operated by three people. So it's not the mega liquor stores that we see on Route Thirty-five and other locations. I can, I know, because I've seen those places, and I find them important. They are what they are.
Yeah, they are what they are, and it is, you know, I mean, you, you see the picture, and you really do see, it is a heart of that community, and you can see it just by looking at the picture, you can see it. It's in the center of what we've been trying to build as a stronger residential community and supporting that. And it's, it's just a difficult fit.
Any other comments from the board?
I live on Catherine Street, and I walk past the site multiple times per day. It kills me that there's not a functioning business in there. So I don't know if I per se have a problem with the use. My concerning questions will probably be more later, but they would have to do with buffering and, you know, overall look of the site and, you know, making someone feel that doesn't think it's a good fit, like need a little more welcoming. And, you know, hidden, hidden away, it's just a, a building in a parking lot right now, so I would, my concerns would be around loitering, things of that sort. But I don't think the use per se is a bad one. And I think taking the curb cut off Shrewsbury Avenue is huge, so happy about that.
Well, I, I stopped by today, and there were a couple cars, I, I don't know if they're taxi drivers or Uber drivers, just sitting there in the parking lot, and I want.
A lot of, a lot of times, it's the giant ivory tree trucks, so four of them will be parked back there during lunchtime. So I mean, that can't be good for the neighborhood. I certainly don't like walking my two kids by it.
The board line with what Sharon was saying, the, one of the small issues from the liquor store at Parker and Leighton is there are patrons who sometimes leave some debris along Parker and surrounding streets. It's not much, but people tell me about it, I knew that one. I hope that the, the new store, if it goes in, would keep an eye on that on Catherine and Shrewsbury, because, you know, their customers sometimes drop things. We appreciate it.
All right, so my comment, I agree with Sharon a hundred percent. I don't, personally, I don't think it's a good fit for the neighborhood. I think a neighborhood store is what you have. You're leaving a neighborhood store and you're creating a store that's twice as big. Whether you want to call it a superstore or not a superstore, it's still a very big liquor store at the entrance to a residential neighborhood. And there are other options for that property. I'm not, you know, certainly a developer could, I don't know if it could be subdivided, I'm sure it could. And there could be two businesses that are in there, I, I imagine, reasonable-sized businesses. But I agree, I don't, I don't quite get why you want a liquor store that size entering into a residential neighborhood. So that's my, that's where I'm headed with it. So that's my opinion on it.
Any other comments from the board?
Uh, yeah. I guess it just, I'm looking at the aerial photo, and it seems like wasted space, that this could have a higher use. I, I, I mean, that's not really what we're here to do tonight, I, I get that, but it. But it just concerns me that, you know, it, I, it's as, it's, it's, there's as much parking lot as there is anywhere retail in this lot, it just, I mean, I, I know what I wish were there, but I, I don't think that's, you know, that's not what we're deciding tonight, so I don't think it's appropriate to discuss. But this just seems wasteful to just have this one business and what seems like a lot of parking around it.
No, I'm saying, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, the problem is and um, I've been dealing with these issues, not just the Redback, but in other towns, and the things that you have to look at are, what's the impact on the neighborhood? What's the impact of it's continued to be underutilized or unutilized? And uh, with all due respect to Mr. Pagnoni, I, I, I don't disagree with you in general, but that, that building, I, I know the building, I knew the Green family very well.
And my car serviced there.
Actually, yeah, and that building is never gonna be subdivided.
Okay.
In, in my opinion, I, I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert, but I, I've done a lot of real estate things, and I, I don't see the pragmatic aspect of that, so some, oftentimes the question comes down to, are we gonna utilize the space and allow it to be occupied? Or are we gonna allow it to continue to fall, and that, that is a difficult issue to wrestle with, I understand. But oftentimes, when you're going year after year after year and there's no rental, it's almost like the gentleman that we had, um, I don't know if you remember, there was a little office on Treebury Avenue. And he, he sat for five years and couldn't get a tenant. And, and the board saw that and they gave regard is to, to convert it to an apartment. And he's already got a, a lease, so.
You know, but Mr. McKenna, couldn't it be, there are developers who have been developing this town over the last decade that have demolished buildings and built, and you've represented tons of them.
Yeah.
And they've built beautiful structures with retail on the ground, maybe some apartments above. Um, or maybe that you can subdivide that and put a single family on that, and then have commercial on the other side, it looks like you have three lots there. Um, so there is other uses, I understand maybe the building's a little awkward, it was an auto body shop or auto repair shop, so you're trying to, to convert it, so certainly you're gonna have your challenges, and anyone who wants to convert it from auto is gonna have a challenge, whatever they put in unless it's an auto shop. But to suggest that there's nothing else that we can do there, so let's approve a four thousand or so square foot liquor store entering into Catherine Street. I'm not convinced on it personally.
And, and I'm not, I'm not debating with you, I, I'm, what I'm suggesting is, not that you, it's not possible that somebody could do something there, it is possible, that they have to acquire the property, demolish the building, and then start from scratch, and your building on Shrewsbury Avenue suggested possibly, I don't, I'm not sure if I understood the suggestion, but perhaps a four or five story residential.
I didn't say four or five stories.
I might have.
I wouldn't say that, no, I am not that guy, but.
No, then you're talking, and, and by the way, a difficult location for residential, it just did.
Yeah, well, I know, because we were here, went uh, down the street, right, on James Parker Boulevard.
Right.
Right, and we were talking about condos and townhouses and commercial and retail, you know, all those different things, but we managed to approve that, I didn't vote for it, but we managed to get approved, and they're putting, you know, thirty eight units to thirty six units there, so development is happening on that street.
Yeah.
Um, so I imagine that will continue with the current, you know, with, the board is open to that. Um, but all I'm saying is, for me personally, um, I agree with what the uh, Mrs. Lee said with it, and so that's, that's just me, you know.
Okay, we'll move this on, no other comments from the board? Okay, um, I guess we, we do.
Sure, uh, if I could just, uh, so Mr. McKenna, is it is, is it your request that you're asking that the application be bifurcated and that there be a, a vote right now on the use variance portion?
I believe so, unless, unless the board says that they want to hear a lot more about the operation and the site. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what the board's preference is, go through those. I want to make sure that the board feels, not somewhere in the other.
Yeah, I'd suggest we go through the whole application and then make a decision, we can vote on the D one and the whole site plan thing together, but I'd like to hear the whole thing before we even vote on the use application.
Okay, um, Mr. O'Neil, can you address the, adjust the architecture? And then we'll move on. Oh, sorry.
So again, as, as I testified earlier, it's an interior renovation. The existing front door of the building that faces Shrewsbury Avenue is being closed off, and on the um, north.
Again, which door is being closed off?
The one on that faces Shrewsbury Avenue.
Okay.
And then there are two new doors going, being proposed um, on the northern wing of the building, the part that makes it an L shape. Uh, one is located in, in lieu of a existing overhead door, which would be removed. And the other is a new door that would face Shrewsbury Avenue, but is recessed back about twenty, twenty-five feet. So in circulation, you would enter the building there either from the front or back parking lot, that's where the counter would be, and then the various aisles would be adjacent to that, um, wrapping around the core, which would be an office, two bathrooms, a janitor's closet, and an ice room. And they would sit in the one corner, and then the rest of the building is a large storage, which is accessed only from the back parking lot. And then the floor, which is where all of the refrigerated, uh, into display cases. So that's, there, the outside, the, the biggest change outside, we have two canopies, one is over the back door, one's over the front door. That's simply to provide weather protection. And there are uh, signs, there are two uh, two foot square max identification signs, which just says that that's the entry. And then there are two wall mounted signs, now, the square footage of the wall mounted signs is in compliance, but because it's on a corner, we think that having one face Shrewsbury Avenue and one face north, the signs visible, as opposed to just having one larger one on Shrewsbury Avenue. But that's a variance because it's two signs. Right, the inner corner of a building that is warranted, if you have two exposures to public street.
Do you have a ren, you don't have a rendering showing it like a three D one or anything, just the flat?
No, just the one that you have, which I believe, right? I think you have two, two, two drawings.
I have that, wow, it's kind of stuck right now.
I'm having trouble downloading this.
I've been having trouble downloading. I have one, flat one.
And uh, just for the record, what is that, I want to make sure that I mark that. That your plan is dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah.
Consisting of two sheets?
Yeah.
Alright, so that is A four.
That's cool, I know that's.
There's a dotted line on the corner, Shrewsbury Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they. Should be able to see the, the.
Oh, oh. Oh, yeah, they now, now. Oh, okay, yeah, I just.
Is A one hundred, yeah, I think that's the thing, I would say two hundred and.
One hundred. Oh, yeah. Okay, good.
That's where the four existing large doors are. Filled with, and two would remain, but they have a wall on the inside, it may not. It's an internally, really facilities that are needing for, for, for making, uh, issues with building code. And there is a ramp because the building internally has two uh, not baseline, but there's a ramp inside to meet the barrier of free accessibility codes. And then there's an ice room because my clients would rather have a room and a dispenser. Uh, they just think it works better, and so, and behind the scenes, you know, they're sitting. So it's, it's not a whole, I think a lot of left out. All of the other windows remain.
You mean the front windows, um, that's facing Shrewsbury, those are the remaining?
Yes.
Okay, this is that the rendering doesn't, it doesn't look like it, so that's why, I, I was worried that that might change.
The door would be, you want to do whatever you're.
I'm sorry, Mr. O'Neil, the, the garage doors on the side are gonna remain, but they're just gonna remain closed, and then there's a wall on the other side of it?
There's a wall on the in, interior, that will provide insulation, things like that, but those two doors will remain. The other two doors, the ones on, toward the corners, they'll be removed and infill, one with a glass storefront system, which is where it would be, and the other with a double delivery door, which will be outside of that.
Sorry, did you say these signs, they're externally illuminated, did you say one of the hours or all the time?
They'd only be illuminated during business hour.
Okay.
Let's repeat, all the exterior walls.
I'm sorry?
All the exterior walls exist, there's no expansion of it, but.
And what, just for the record, any um, exterior work being done with regard to the um, materials of the, of the, of the building?
Well, again, Mr. Goodman redid the exterior row recently, so we can just match and anything we disturb.
Thank you.
Would it be helpful to go through the T N N letter at this point?
At the, um, don't mind. Some of it's for your engineer, really, I'm just gonna try to pick out the ones that I think. Um. Page, page seven. Um, comma, three point ten, with regard to the doorway awnings on the west elevation, the west side. Um, that's projecting into the driveway. Is that a question for you, Mr. O'Neil?
Please. Yeah, clearly, we have to discuss that, and if you saw it in your letter, we're going to advise you, seeing that if there's any concern that way being uh, too low and whoever you trust running into it, we can just hold that anyway. But if, if it's, uh, tracking the true recommendation of this, the board's feeling that they would like the awnings removed, we would just take them out.
Yeah, I think that, that would be a good idea if you, if you want to have that doorway there, if you still want to have the doorway there, you should need the awning.
I mean, you know, the purpose of the awning was protect people as they're entering the building, but it's not gonna provide that. You still eliminate.
That, that would be our recommendation, but it's up to the board. They feel that the awning should be there, but it, it's really in the way of their deliveries. Um.
We have no class.
Okay. Um. Deliveries, would that be a question for you? Landscaping and lighting, I think it's mostly an enge, engineering question. I, I have um, a question, so I see that in the existing store, and this is kind of like one of my issues with liquor stores, is the fact that the um, windows are mostly covered with advertising. Um, and it looks a bit tacky and it's very influential um to people around them, I'm just wondering, are we gonna have that same type of window signage? There's a lot of windows here um, on this building, so are we gonna have that same advertising, the large um, different types of sales of what, what's gonna be sold, the products that's gonna be sold there? Um, and then I see also the neon signs, like it's, it's the typical look of a liquor store window, um, and is that the same type of window display that's going to be there? Um. I understand that for safety purposes, sometimes you, you need it to block out um, where the cash register is, but like, is it better to just do frosted windows instead of these um, the advertising, the posters?
I had a very abbreviated discussion with uh, the representative, and they said we would be happy to, if, if, if we move forward, we'd be happy to sit down and, and speak about that and come up with restrictions and different ideas as far as how.
I mean, they're not permitted at all, because your, your window signs are supposed to be twenty percent of the um, of the window, of the storefront window, so the one across the street where you, you're existing, I know it's Google Maps, um, Google Street View, but it, it takes up pretty much the entire storefront window. Um, so I wouldn't want to see that replicated on the other side.
Uh, the indication I just got was that it would not be, but, but, and I'm saying they wouldn't want any. So they're saying, they, if we get to that point, we keep that as a condition of approval and we come back and.
And just know, I understand, to the neon sign, the neon lights. I, I wouldn't agree to that either. Um. Again, because it looks like a typical liquor store. Um, yeah, I mean, like, yeah, it is a typical liquor store, but if we're, it, it's a nice location, the building is nice, and it's in, the improvements that you made are, were very nice to the exterior, so to kind of like.
I'd, I'd agree with that.
Class it down.
There is, they serve liquor stores, the one on White Street.
Yeah.
Doesn't have the windows, but like, I don't, there's has to be ways to.
Just frost the windows.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I could understand that, but it's, I understand you want people to be drawn in, but I mean, the signage itself is gonna say liquor store, so people know what's sold there. Um, just to have the, this, the posters there in front, I, I'm completely against that. That's gonna be what's gonna happen um, in this space.
You know what, they may encourage somebody to become creative.
Yeah, and I'm okay with like the open sign that's neon. Um, again, I'm looking at what's there now, there's the, the ultra, um, the beer sign, that's a neon sign, that's like right there. I wouldn't want to see any of that also in the window, um, as a window sign.
Mr. McKenna, who are, who are we discussing the parking configuration with, is Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Andrew.
And Mr. Cor.
Okay, just the interior and the exterior building renovations for Mr. O'Neil, yeah.
So any other questions for Mr. O'Neil?
So any other questions for Mr. O'Neal before we move to the next witness? Any questions from the public for Mr. O'Neal? Okay, Mr. McKenna, let's go to your next witness.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Stockton. If you could just state your name and business address for the record.
My name is Andrew Stockton. My company is Eastland Credit Management, uh, Quiddity, William Grant School, and I am a student.
All right. If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, best of your knowledge, to help you, God?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as a licensed certified.
Professional engineer and professional land surveyor.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if some of the new members know you, so if you could give us your credence.
Sure. I am licensed in New Jersey, New York, and Maryland as a professional engineer and professional land surveyor. Also licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. And, uh, as a professional planner as well in Jersey. All of my licenses are current and in good standing with the state boards. Um, I've testified in, before Red Bank zoning board and planning board, uh, as well as, uh, different applications in the probably sixty-six or sixty-seven different municipalities, uh, in more than half of the counties across the state. Projects, large and small. And I was a long-term, more than twenty-five-year, uh, member and chairman of my, uh, planning board and land use board in my hometown of Highlands for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Stockton. I'm excited.
So, uh, for the record, this, this, uh, project site is, uh, I heard it mentioned there are three existing lots. Seven point oh one, eleven point oh two, and eleven point oh three in block seventy-three. Uh, the track is situated at the corner of Shrewsbury Avenue and Catherine Street. Where it's located. It has the overall dimensions of eighty-seven feet uh, with frontage along Shrewsbury Avenue and a hundred and sixty feet deep with frontage along Catherine Street. There's an existing, uh, one-story masonry building on the property. And that existing building has a footprint of three thousand seven hundred and sixteen square feet. And it's, uh, sub-tended by, or, uh, in, in addition to the building, uh, there is, uh, an existing driveway and parking area on the property. The existing driveway actually has, uh, four, um, curb cuts and driveway aprons. Uh, two on Shrewsbury Avenue and two on Catherine Street. And the existing driveway or parking area consists of, um, altogether in the existing condition, fourteen parking spaces. In, in the, in the back or the westerly side of the building and seven in the, uh, in the front or the easterly side of the building. adjacent to Shrewsbury Avenue and the seven, uh, buildings in the, in the front area, I'm sorry, seven parking spaces in the front area along Shrewsbury Avenue. One of those is an existing handicap, um, parking space. When I, uh, prepared the topographic survey of the property, I did collect spot grade data and, and, uh, uh, around that existing handicap parking space, found the, um, existing, uh, depressed curb and, and curb ramp for it to not be up to current ADA standards. Um, and it is a proposed configuration that we have, we will be improving that to make sure that it does meet uh, current ADA standards. Um, altogether, with regard to the, uh, existing driveway and parking, uh, lot configuration. The, the basic idea is to eliminate the two curb cuts and driveway aprons on Shrewsbury Avenue altogether. Restripe or repair any, uh, damaged pavement area and restripe the, uh, the parking lots to uh, the configuration that's shown on, uh, the site plan exhibit A two. Uh, there will be seven, uh, parking spaces in the, in the back that will remain. I think the existence, and there'll be a total of, uh, nine parking spaces in the front. One of those being the handicap parking space stall that I just, uh, just described. In addition, we'll be adding a, uh, a small, uh, enclosed tra- trash enclosure, um, in the back parking area as, uh, so I think we discussed before. Uh, for, uh, normal trash storage and an area where they might need to store, um, cardboard materials for recycling purposes.
I got, I got one question for you. The parking spaces in front on Shrewsbury Avenue.
Yes.
How far away would they be from the, uh, sidewalk?
There, the way that I have it set up. It's kind of due to how the existing parking lot drains from the building out towards the gutter line at, uh, Shrews, at Shrewsbury Avenue. Um, had the pavement goes right up to the edge of the back of the sidewalk right now. Now, that would still be the case after development. Um, but we would put a series of, uh, the bumper blocks to not cut off any surface drainage pattern. But to make sure that we don't hang, uh, the car bumpers over onto the sidewalk area. So those bumper blocks uh, would, would stop the tires, which would stop the, uh, the front bumpers from hanging over onto the sidewalk. And they're usually set back about two feet or so from the, from the edge of pavement to do that.
Wouldn't it be better to have the cars parked, uh, next to the building? I think from a safety standpoint. Uh, you know, people, you know, drive a little past a little paint barrier you got, hit somebody in the sidewalk.
If you do look at the, uh, the topographic map of existing conditions, uh, that is how it's arranged right now. But in order to do that, we would have to keep the two curb cuts and driveway aprons with access onto Shrewsbury Avenue. So in, in looking at the, uh, the overall configuration that we proposed, we think this is a much better layout for the parking lot, uh, and, and use of the property for.
Why, why would you have to have the driveway on Shrewsbury Avenue? I'm, this is bad.
You would have, if you had the, uh, cars parked right up against the front of the building rather than right up against the sidewalk area on Shrewsbury Avenue. Maybe if I could, uh, refer to this exhibit.
Sure. And what, what is that?
This is a, a colored rendering, uh, aerial map exhibit that I prepared for.
And what's the, is that the, the one that is?
This is, this is not part of the application.
Oh, so we need to mark this. All right. So, uh, we're up to A thirteen. And what is A thirteen? He says it's an illustrated.
A thirteen is a colored rendering exhibit, uh, for the minor site plan. And it's dated, prepared by me and it's dated, uh, September tenth, two, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you.
Uh, and this exhibit shows, uh, an aerial image background of the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and the site plan layout with the, uh, existing building footprint shown in brown. Uh, the, uh, parking lot and driveway configuration for the project. And then shown in green are, are little, uh, existing and or proposed green spaces or landscaped areas that we show for the project. So if we, if we took on this exhibit, I show the, uh, seven parking stalls that we propose, uh, facing, uh, out towards Shrewsbury Avenue. If we took those parking spaces and moved them up to the building, we wouldn't have room for a drive aisle um, to exit out onto Catherine Street. So we would have to keep the existing curb cut connections or existing driveway connections to Shrewsbury Avenue. And it would be a little, uh, would be contrary to the county's review requirements from their standards and their desire to, uh,
I'm, I guess I'm confused. The car is the same size, whether you're parking it against the sidewalk or against the building.
You would have a drive aisle.
Yeah.
Rather than, uh, than the driveway access right out onto Shrewsbury Avenue. And if you put a drive aisle here, you wouldn't have enough room to make, uh, a turn without you would lose parking to do that.
How many spaces would you lose?
You would probably lose, uh, at least half of them. Uh, i- i- if we tried to, uh, shift these, uh, seven parking stalls, we might end up with only three to do that.
Then you would need.
Sorry, if you go that route and point towards the building instead of the, um, the sidewalk. Then you'd have, and eliminate some parking. Which I don't even know if you can park on the site triangle, correct? Can you park on the site triangle? So, I mean, there's a lot of questions here. The, the, the parking layout, the way it is right now, we don't know if you're allowed to even have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven spaces, right? Because we don't know. Because it's a site triangle. So this is just. I, I, I think there's like a lot of questions here. I think you need to lay out the site in different, um, ways. You also need to have a buffer. There's a buffer required or, or a landscape island between in, in between the sidewalk and, and the, the parking area. So there's different ways that you could reconfigure that parking lot to have less variances. And you might lose parking. So I think we're kind of.
I definitely agree with that.
Yeah, I, especially if you're going to create, if you're going to, if you're removing the, the curb cuts. Then your career, as you, in your testimony earlier, you're going to be creating two spaces on the street. That's what was said. So losing some parking in the front wouldn't be that bad. And then on top of that, how what's a turnover? I guess, John, you're going to testify today. What's the turnover for, um, a liquor store? It's probably like, what, fifteen minutes the most, um? And so losing the parking spaces actually wouldn't, wouldn't make sense. You wouldn't need all your parking. So maybe going for the variance, adding that to it, but.
I'm, I'm going to ask Mr. McCormick, I'm going to take him up and speak to this issue.
Yeah.
Just get, get a lot to square in.
Sure.
Okay.
If you could just, uh, state your name and business address.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, John McCormick with Dynamic Traffic, uh, nineteen oh four Main Street.
We can set the mic, please. You need that again?
Sure.
Uh, John McCormick with Dynamic Traffic, nineteen oh four Main Street in Lake Como.
All right. If you could just raise your right hand. Do you swear that the information and testimony you're about to provide will be the truth, the best of your knowledge, to help you, God?
I do.
And just for the record, you're testifying tonight in your capacity as?
Traffic engineer.
Thank you.
And you, you have been in front of us several times, so.
And that, yes, thank you, Mr. McCann.
Testimony.
Yeah, um, okay. So the access to the property has been challenging from the start. Um, I think, I think how we got here is chasing the ordinance requirement. And I think that's wrong. I think this site can manage with less than half the parking spaces that we currently propose. Um, the front yard is the, is the reason for probably half of the comments in Mr. and Ms. Letter. Um, it is the, the removal of the access advances the county's improvement plan for Shrewsbury Avenue. But the parking lot in the front and the bumper stops and the minimal sidewalk do not. So we have discussed potentially getting rid of the whole front parking lot. I would much prefer to request a parking variance than to try to fight through the county and Ms. Durman on issues that I tend to agree with you. So the, the removal of the driveways does gain you two or three on-street parking spaces. Depending on how the county wants to build bump outs and things at the corner, that may change that slightly, but we're creating curb space. We, we're, we're going to have to go to the county. That's their intersection. That's their frontage. But I, I do think that eliminating the front parking lot goes a long way for a lot of concerns. It gives a lot of leeway. And it does, um, it, it does further advance what the county and the boroughs trying to do on Shrewsbury Avenue. Um, I think for the loading and things like that, I would almost like to leave, if I come up here. I would like to start the discussion with leaving this one-way drive aisle adjacent to the building. It makes the, the delivery vans and the single unit thirty, the single unit box trucks that we expect. It makes that movement a lot easier. It would be a one-way loop from the back to the front and they would come out there. Uh, you know, we could discuss since this aisle and, and this driveway, I think, need to be there for that movement. Maybe we leave the handicap spot in the front, right at the front door. But I, I think, I think the rest of these parking spaces, you know, we have a little bit of a substandard drive aisle, which I think we've done that in the past and that's no, not a problem. But the, the bumper stops right up against the curb and the sidewalk. I agree with your comments. So, you know, does a, does a building that currently has zero parking spaces, zero loading spaces, zero trash enclosure. Does that, does that business, when it moves net across the street, need more than seven or so parking spaces? It's going to get a loading zone. It's going to get a proper refuse, uh, location. Uh, and then we, and then this property owner can enhance that corner. That was not the testimony outline I had.
And I mean, thank you for that. Obviously, there's a lot of things we need to find out. Um, one is come back with another plan, but I, I think there's some other things you need to find out from the county if you want to stay with this plan. Um, so I, I don't know, with all this stuff, I think maybe we should look at the D one use variance, maybe vote on that. If that's what you'd like, Mr. McCann, at this point, before we go ahead and do any other new plans or anything like that.
I, I, I haven't discussed that with our client right now. Um, I do want to say something.
Into the mic.
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Unwinding this film. Um. I, I, I do want to discuss that. I wish to point out that, that I'm really glad you asked that question. Because we discussed it. We saw it in your letter, Jackie. And, and we, we did sit down and discuss it. I, I just want you to know. When we get comments, we actually take them very seriously and discuss them. And that's how we got to the conclusion of what we're saying now. So in other words, we had standard testimony prepared before. But after kicking it around and then thoroughly thinking it through, we said, you know something, this is a better idea. So, good job, right? And then Jackie, I mean, really, there, there was, so we discussed that possibility and whether or not that would um, be something that the board would want us to, to look at seriously. Now, we don't have, we don't have, um, a problem uh, coming back and making the plan adjustments. You think, we think we can address the concerns. Not, not all concerns. We can't address the concerns about the size of the building and, you know, the neighborhood, but we can address, uh, the landscaping, other issues. We've got a lot of time on it. Uh, and unfortunately, as always, we didn't have as much time as we would have liked before the meeting. But we did take your letter very seriously and went through it. And we, we always appreciate good suggestions and try to, um, understand them and then appreciate them and then try to weave them into our plan. So um, I'm prepared. It's, it's okay with the plan. We'll get the, the vote on the use variance. And if, if that passes, then we will be back. Um, I promise, but, uh, with a different planner. And we hope like much more appetizing to everyone. And, um, Jackie, we worked with you, uh, even before coming back with, with another plan. Uh, you know, sometimes it's unfortunate. It's not their fault. It's not, it's not anybody's fault. Sometimes you get the letters, help the, it's, it's and to try to get ahold of your professionals and have conversations with clients and everything. It's just, it, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But here we had an opportunity to at least speak and, um, and understand and appreciate, so.
Yeah, I think it's also important. Like that, you know, they want, they didn't want to go for parking variance, right? So they planned it this way. So they planned it this way, but you could see there's nobody in the public, like, is, is parking really an issue? And we usually see that with the amount of people that come. So I think it was important for them to go through this process, because if the room was filled with people talking about that parking is an issue, maybe that's not the route that they want to take. So either way, I think we needed to go through this exercise to see what, what the neighborhood or the, or the board wants.
To that point, I'd say, the more I look at it, the, the parking can't happen against sidewalks. I agree with removing that. But now I'm concerned what that looks like. Because the NJ dot plan to knock out load, Shrewsbury Avenue is hopefully coming soon. And I think there's supposed to be a nice big bump out there. So I don't really want it to just look like a flat, you know, from the corner to the building. Like, I don't, I don't know what, are you gonna rip up, not you personally, but are you gonna rip up the asphalt now? And then is that, I guess, more of a question for Shawna? For the use variance vote.
Actually, Ben, we, you know, we're, when we meet with the county, we're gonna talk about the bump out.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited for that.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we actually talked about it in front of all the other day, in other contexts. So we're aware of it, and it's not something that we're not going to bring up.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I guess, as far as the use variance vote. I don't know, does it affect someone's thinking, like, how the plan comes back? That doesn't really, you know, I don't.
I would think you would want the use variance vote as to save your client any expense. If, if it gets denied on the use variance, then there's no need for your client to go back and rework everything. That's the only, I think it would be more efficient to have at least a vote on the use variance.
That's what I, I'd recommend is, you know, obviously, there's a couple of board members aren't crazy about it. So I think you do need five, you need five votes.
But it's, it's to answer.
Seven. There's only gonna be seven.
If, if the plan itself gets denied.
It's based, it's not really the plan. It's whether the use is suitable for that site. So that's, it's not really the configuration.
So that's, so that's what I'm saying. So if they come back and I say, me personally, I can figure, I'm fine with the disturbing there, but the configuration and the setback doesn't work. You know, I mean, that's a separate, I'm just, I'm just clarifying.
Then you check this based on that, the, the site plan, the layout, but.
That would be my concern of, like, the plan coming back and it being not palatable. The buffering and.
At least they have Plan A and Plan B, so.
Can you come back with the, the C D, like, the, the three D drawing, like, to actually see what it will look like? Not just a flat, just because I need to see. I'm not, I'm not good imagining.
I would, I would say the word, like, the definite what the signage is gonna look like. And, and that, that's a concern of mine, too. The window signs and the wall signs, but again, the vote, the board needs to vote on.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Yur, your question. It's a parking lot.
Microphone, please. That's okay. We got people watching.
Very good. If the parking lot is removed in the front, to whatever extent we decide on, that would be law. That would be, you know, landscaping against the building. Yeah, there was, there's no way we would leave.
Yeah, so that, not, not stripe it, but it's still just.
So we would be.
Right now, people, it's a race point parking there, you know.
It would fall right in line, parallel parking, nice big sidewalk, lawn, landscaped building front. You know, it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so. Sure, so as you have all very adeptly indicated, so we're gonna ask Mr. McKenna what he wants in one second, but some of the more apparent options would be to vote on the use. If you vote yes, we have a bunch of conditions that we talked about over. And obviously, the big condition would be subject to the applicant coming back for site plan approval. And, and Ben, to your point, and we always point this out to say, just if the use variance is approved, there's no guarantee that the future site plan and bulk variants that are gonna be approved is gonna be, they've gotta prove their case. Or obviously, if the use variance is denied, that's the end of that. And to Mr. Cagnon's point, that does save the applicant a lot of time and aggravation and money. And then the other school of thought is if there's people who say, well, I might be inclined to vote for the use, or I just don't know, because I need to see more information before I can commit. That's something that we'll deal with. So, and as Shawna just indicated, for members of the public who are here or watching, with a use variance, there's two or three special rules that apply. And first is only seven people on the board vote. And it's not just, most other things in life are majority rules, but at least for the statute, for use variance, we need five affirmative yes votes in order for the application to be approved, five of the seven. So, Mr. McKenna, against that very convoluted backdrop, and I'm sorry, I wasn't more eloquent, but against that backdrop, at least what is your request at this point?
I think you did a pretty good job, Kevin. Now, I, we, we would like the board to.
On the use variance?
Yes.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, if the board is so inclined, I can quickly recite the, the conditions that I've at least taken down.
I think the conditions, Kevin, are based on the site plan. So maybe you could save them for the site plan?
We, we, we could absolutely do that. I guess we would just, at a minimum, it would be.
Some of the conditions for the industry.
Right.
Yeah.
In terms of the operational, so at, at a minimum, just real, real quickly. Compliance with all the promises, commitments, and representations the team made tonight. Compliance with the use variance portions of the T and M Associates review letter. Compliance with all the Affordable Housing Rules, Regulations, Contributions, and Directives necessary to obtain all outside approvals. With the obvious, obvious caveat that if the nature of the application of the requested relief materially changes as a result of those outside approvals, further relief is required for the board. And then just for the record, well, we have a twenty-four month timeframe. Shawna, with the use variance, we definitely would need any, not need any type of development agreement. And just for the record, and only because we've had some trouble and confusion with this in the, in the, in the past, not with your client, but just in general, you're aware that this zoning board adjustment has absolutely no authority over liquor licenses and, and things like that. And, and you need to get that from the borough and the state. Every once in a while, we'll have people that say, well, we sat in a room and I got sworn, and there was a lawyer in the room. So I think I thought everything was that, and I don't know, though, there's place-to-place transfer and all that thing. And then just for the record, there's not going to be any time where there's two liquor, your, your client will be operating two liquor stores. It's only gonna be one liquor store, correct?
Yes, correct. And Kevin, just, just to what you said, we've already made application for the appropriate municipal licenses and state licenses. And so we're, we're well into the process, but we just, we need to address that.
Okay, and then we obviously, we have the, the private hauler and perpetually maintaining landscaping. And again, some of this is gonna be site-related, but in terms of the use, Mr. Chairman, I think what you all generally do when you approve a use variance is you basically have what we call an intensity regulator, meaning you all went to great lengths to have the applicants go to great lengths to tell you what was gonna be the intensity, what was gonna be the hours of operation, what was going to be the delivery schedule, the intensity of the maximum number of employees on the site at one time. So those would all be conditions, and they would be binding on successor owners and operators and tenants, compliance with ADA regulations. And there's typically no further expansion, the no two liquor stores. I don't, I mean, at some point, if the application is approved, you and you move, you surrender or transfer the existing license, whatever, whatever that phrase is. We have, let's see, private hauler, and I think, is it fair to say that there's no outside storage of materials or the garbage or the cardboard? Is that outsourced inside, outside?
It's in the trash receptacle.
Okay. Not visible, that the hours of operation would be the nine AM to ten PM, with the caveat that if municipal regulations prohibit or prevent lesser hours, I mean, you've got to comply with those regulations. Trash picked up in the rear. All right, and it, it's, it's just a liquor store. There's no restaurant or bar, correct?
That's correct.
And we're gonna have landscaping and we'll get, and there's no entertainment at the site, correct? And let's see, obviously, no interference with site triangle easements and, and, and the county approval. We talked about that. All right. You know, it's, it's not necessarily a condition right now, but there is a, as Mr. Yurov said, basically make it more welcoming, but I think that's what you were going at with the, the better parking and the better landscaping. And I think there was a requirement that with this use, if there, if the use is approved, I got the impression that members of the board wanted a firm, aggressive, and perpetually enforced anti-loyering process.
Yes.
Policy. And we wanted that policy.
I think we're doing the US that was.
Awesome.
Very expensive discussion.
Perfect, to be aggressively monitored, and, and that's also, I think, Mr. Havens, you talked about aggressively monitoring and arranging for employees to regularly and perpetually, you know, patrol the, the area and clean up after their, their patrons. Obviously, it's subject to the site plan approval, being accrued with no guarantees. Let's see. Shawna, I think you wanted confirmation that the front window is facing Shrewsbury Avenue to remain, and the plans will be clarified. Let's see, the awnings projected in the driveway will be eliminated. And then Shawna, I'm not gonna be a good wordsmith on this part, but I think you wanted confirmation that the applicant is obviously going to comply with the twenty percent threshold for windows. We want it to be no neon lights, no neon signs, and we want the for our windows to be frosted, and it's, given the fact that, well, you sort of don't want it to be your typical liquor store appearance. As Ben said, there are some nicer-looking liquor stores, and I guess Shawna, your point is more apt in the fact that this doesn't need a use variance. And so you want that frosted windows and the, the twenty percent threshold and compliance with all compliance with the T and M windows. And I think, did you say no posters?
No.
Okay, no posters. And Shawna, I just had a curiosity, or Jackie, any reason we need to consolidate the three lots?
They're owned by the same owner.
Isn't it honorary?
All right, so it's functionally merged?
Yeah.
And if, if not, we'll, we'll do that. And then compliance with the ADA, Mr. Chairman, we're getting there.
It's snowing outside, Kevin. Long drive home.
Still got half hours, so.
Now, are we committing to eliminating the, the whole front parking lot, or we're just gonna do that later on after?
Yeah. Come back with.
All right, so that'll be, and let's see, we work with the good faith engineer and no guarantees. And when you come back, submit CD renderings of what the site's gonna be look like. And I guess the other confirmation is, as will be explained on the site plan aspect, if the use variance application is approved, with that removal of the front yard parking lot, it's gonna be perpetually replaced with lawn and landscaped building front. So, Mr. McKenna, are those conditions generally acceptable to you and your team?
Yeah, one thing I want to mention, the elimination of the parking.
Up in the light.
I'm sure you're here.
Good thing we're the only ones here. We, we may want to keep the handicap spot in the front.
Got it.
Okay, we don't want to eliminate that. It's, that's, that's important. Make sure we're in that good.
So noted, so we'll add that. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, now it's up to you and the board as to, I'm assuming there's gonna be a vote on the use variance-only aspect of the proposal.
Okay, there's time. Would anybody like to make a motion to either approve or deny this application? This D one part of this application?
Yeah, I will move to approve the use variant, the D one application. I'll subject, subject to the conditions that have been noted.
So I'll be calling all the regular members. And Tori?
Yes.
Ray Mas?
I just wanna make a comment that I'm, I'm a little torn from some of the comments from people who live over in that area about the concerns they have of building a big liquor store. But at the same time, that building's been empty for five years, and it needs to get something in there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote yes.
Eileen Hogan?
Um, yes.
Ben Yarrow?
I'll let go what Ray said. I'm interested to see what you guys come back with, site plan wise, but yes, on this particular piece.
Sharon Lee?
I'm gonna know.
Vincent Light?
Yes.
And then Paul Cagnon?
I'm gonna know.
All right, that was five affirmative. Yeah, the application's perfect.
We need to set a time for.
Yeah, just for the record, Ed, if we, either you're gonna have to re-notice for the site plan.
Of course, yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say, you didn't want to set a time now?
No.
Okay.
You know what, that's not.
Very good.
Wait, with the parking variance? If, if there is a parking variance.
Actually, what we're gonna do is we submit our new plans.
Okay.
So you'll re-notice?
I'm planning on doing it just like it's scratch.
Oh, that's awesome.
And then you can tell us what other variants we may need, so everybody follows the same thing.
Very good.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, all in favor?